I don't have anything.
Did you sign up for the board conference?
And that's Tuesday, and I don't have anything on Tuesday.
I don't know.
Um, did you sign up for the board conference?
I think you did in August.
I did.
Like in the Victor Hotel.
Joan.
She did.
Joan said she was just glad one board member was on the ball.
I was.
I think that's what she said anyway.
Nice Joan, you ratted us out.
She said you were her favorite too, didn't she?
She did, well, yeah.
I don't believe it.
Well, she said she always liked her favorite being the problem child, so that's why she picked me.
A lot of attention he gets.
What did you really say, Joan?
I didn't say that.
That's what she said every time I hung up with their question.
There's a truth right there.
I'm signed up, Brian is the problem child that we can sign with here.
Brian's just late to everything.
I've been quiet.
We know that.
You don't have a problem child, you're just late.
I was quiet. No, I was sort of today. You were the first one here.
Well, don't push that, I might have voted first.
I got here real fast.
The call for me is ordered, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Tonight was school picture night for the Board of Education, so thanks everybody for being here for that. All right. Mr. Mike, uh, words, recognitions, and celebrations.
I'd just like to celebrate a couple, couple items. First of all, this is the 50th anniversary of the Flint Metro League, and so for each of you, we have the Flint Metro League decided to put together commemorative coins to represent their 50th anniversary. So each of you get one of those. Um, and also the coaches, I believe, are taking, uh, those as well. So, um, the, uh, Flint Metro League's been around, you know, for 50 years. Uh, today there are nine members, um, and, uh, great conference, a lot of good camaraderie within the conference, and so, um, that's a, that's an exciting thing. And then I think, um, you know, just the celebration of start of the school year. We had a tremendous start to the year. Um, all of us in central office have been out, um, and, and, which has been really neat to see, uh, Colleen and so, uh, many of our office staff here have been going out to buildings, um, and we've been in every building in the district multiple times, and, uh, the sense is very, very positive. So the kids are excited and the teachers seem to be excited and, uh, the support staff's doing great. So it's, uh, it's been a real nice, uh, start. And so the honeymoon period's about to end, so it's about time to, uh, keep the momentum going. And so it'll be, uh, hopefully, a really good year.
Thank you. Any questions for Ben? All right, number four, we have a consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, support.
Mike, Brian, any comments or questions? Hearing none, no some favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, superintendent report.
Okay, uh, so Stacy had the opportunity to go, uh, to the Community Mission Board. Their second meeting was, uh, two days ago. And, uh, the Community Mission Board, the, the idea here, Dave Semantik has started this board, and it's kind of stemmed from some of the luncheons we've had with our local clergy at the pastors' luncheons. Um, the purpose of this is to bu- build a bridge between our school district and the community by supporting and serving the needs of our students and members in our community. So, um, at this particular meeting, a variety of people, uh, were present. Uh, Dave and I have had meetings with members of the Senior Center, uh, City Council, um, the, the Schwartz Creek Area Women's Club. Um, we're trying to bring in as many people as we can, and, uh, there are representatives, there are representatives from each one of our school buildings that are present as well. Uh, we had people from the Michigan Department of Education there. We had people from the, uh, Eastern Michigan Food Bank, um, the United Methodist Food Pantry. I think, you know, uh, twen- there were 21 people.
Senior, you said the senior side, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, um, so it was, uh, the Genesee Food Rescue Program, a large, large cross-section of people. So you're all invited to that. Um, Dave will make sure that he gets out those calendars. If you haven't been invited already, please let me know.
I have the dates if anybody wants the next ones too.
Um, the Community Mission Board's main focus this year, uh, Dave has got this off the ground. Uh, first one is a backpack program. We're looking at providing meals and food for needy children. Um, every single one of our elementary schools will have, uh, students that have no food on the weekends or limited food on the weekends will have, uh, meals that take home every single Friday. Um, that used to be a program only at Elms. We've expanded it, so every single elementary school will have access to that. Um, he's also starting, uh, a threads program where, um, people in the community can bring gently-used clothing items for people that don't have clothes. Um, and he's developed some processes for, for housing the clothes and being able to distribute that. Um, he has also been working, uh, with Michael, um, our interim food service director, on a food rescue program. I know that we've talked about, uh, that in a variety of capacities, but ways that we can, um, you know, save some of the waste that we have from food and, and be able to use it for people that, that need it. Um, another kind of interesting, uh, project that looks to be, um, starting out of this is a gen-to-gen program. It's a generation-to-generation program with the Senior Center. Um, you can probably imagine that there's a lot of opportunity for our seniors to impart wisdom to our young children, uh, reading books in classrooms and those types of things. But also, um, there's a number of our seniors who would love to have a teenager show them how to use their smartphone. And so we have kind of a, you know, get kids in our community to have some more interactions, meaningful interactions with our senior community. So, um, I think it's gonna be an exciting development, uh, that's coming out of there as well. Um, so if you have any questions about that, you know, certainly let me know. Uh, they are gonna meet on a monthly basis, and, uh, it's, looks, looks very exciting.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, sure.
No, no, she just said when the next, when the next one is, uh, Tuesday, November 7th. And they're at 1:00, always right here.
They're 1:00 at the Cage Field House.
And I can, um, he sent me the email, I can forward it to everybody.
That'd be great.
Um, yeah, and then I can, yeah.
We also have a program, um, that Richard Thompson's gonna be a part of called Reaching Higher. This program is designed for middle school and high school students, um, and it's a way to bridge, uh, we take community mentors and pair them up with students, and, um, it's a, it's a pretty phenomenal program. If you're familiar with Dale Carnegie, uh, very similar version to that for schools. And so Richard's getting that started in both buildings, and so he may be asking you, or if you have an interest in, in being a mentor, um, basically you'd be working with a small group of five kids for a nine-week period. It's a nine-week commitment. We're gonna run three cohorts throughout this school year, and, um, you know, you can come in and out depending on your availability, but it looks like, uh, it's got a lot of promise.
May I add something to that?
Mm-hmm.
There's a meeting Monday at, it's 2:30, right, Lorraine, did I say?
2:30.
2:30 if anybody is going to be in that, to come in the middle school.
Yep, so, um, I, I think it's gonna be, uh, fantastic, you know, again, trying to reach some of our students that sometimes can slip through the cracks. Um, the Schwartz Creek Historical Society, I met with them, uh, this past week, and they are going to be, um, taking up shop in one of our rooms in the Mary Creepole Building. Uh, it was a room that they feel they can repurpose, uh, to bring some of their archives in. Uh, we're working on creating kind of a link to some of our classrooms, uh, with our AP History students so that they have an opportunity to maybe help, um, learn a little bit more about that and also help them get some of those archives, uh, up and running. So, very, uh, neat opportunity to work with them. And, uh, also was contacted this week, um, Ken and, and I were talking just a little bit. There's a really interesting project from one of the local fire departments. So, uh, Robbie Fitzpatrick is here, and, uh, wanted to give him a chance to maybe share, uh, just something that they've been working on and anything you'd like to tell us.
Absolutely. Uh, good afternoon, uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Lieutenant Robbie Fitzpatrick, Schwartz Creek Area Fire Department. Um, I've been doing community fire prevention activities, stuff like that, throughout the schools here in the community, as well as helping out with the summer programs, cops in the park, Camp 911, things like that. Um, one of the things that we've been set up to do was over about, well, four years ago, um, we started looking at different ways to enhance our fire prevention and community education within the community, especially after the loss that we had here not too long ago with the little boy around the corner here. Um, then our fire prevention, community, uh, education mainly is just been showing up to the school, talking to little kids, getting them used to the firefighters, showing some videos, talk about home fire escape, things like that. Um, that came along, this project, this is something that I used to go through when I was a kid. This is a fire safety trailer. This is set up to mock the inside of an interior of a house. Um, four years ago, we set out, um, through our firefighter association, which is a 501(c)(3), to start raising funds to purchase this. Um, we were originally looking at a brand-new one, which cost us about $57,000. Unfortunately, that's a lot of money to try raising funds for, so I started looking at different avenues. And I found this trailer in Brum County, New York, uh, probably about 35 minutes south of Syracuse, New York. Called them up, talked to them about it. They were looking for about $12,500 on it. Started working with them a little bit, got them down to about $9,500. So, through the funds that we raised and through the firefighter association, which is, I'm sure some of you guys wear it, we do help out doing, uh, different grants and stuff like that for the kids, for college scholarships and things like that. So we were able to purchase this, and we got this back in here. Um, it's a 1998, it's two stories, built by Scotty Fire Safety Trailers. Um, like I said, the, the inside is mocked up like the interior of a house. Um, we could teach a ver- a variety of different topics and everything else with that. Uh, but with it being 20 years old, it still needs some work and stuff like that. But I have been getting it out in the community, starting to get the kids used to it and going through it. But I'll go ahead and take you through it a little bit, show you guys what this is all about. It is ADA compliant, so no matter if we go to school and the kids are in wheelchairs or they have any kind of special needs or anything else like that, we're able to take and put kids through this, so they can get the same opportunity to learn the fire safety inside of the home, how to escape during home house fires and things like that. Inside the living room here has a 911 phone, um, which connects to the control room, which I'll show in a few pictures here a little bit later. So we bring the kids in, uh, has a mock phone in there, calls into the control room. The person answers the phone, 911, what's your emergency? We start teaching the kids how to call 911, what it's gonna be like on the other end, the questions that they're gonna ask, how to stay calm and talk to them on the phone. Has fireplace, we can place, uh, a variety of different products around the fireplace to make sure that, you know, kids are aware of things, not keep around there, keep paper away from there, anything that can catch on fire and burn, to keep things away from it. Um, Myers was gracious enough, graciousness enough to donate a couple of TVs for us that we're gonna put in here. So in this living room here, I can actually show fire safety videos inside the living room with a group of kids as well. Um, has a smoke detector, so we can talk to the kids about the importance of having a smoke detector in every room, how they work, how to change the batteries, do maintenance and things like that on them. In the kitchen, set up just like a normal kitchen, very small, but, um, we have a stove in there. We can talk about the dangers, cooking dangers, um, we talk to little kids about not running around the side of the kitchen, uh, hit a pot or something like that, or touch the stove, they can get burned. So, we talk to them about that, keeping appliances away from water so they don't get electrocuted. Uh, I have a fire extinguisher trainer, teaches them how to use a fire extinguisher in the event that there is a fire inside of the kitchen. The control room here is, uh, where the 911 phone rings to. It also has a smog foam, uh, smoke fog machine that you use during Halloween for different props and stuff like that. But we have, uh, different vents to push into each room, and we can actually start filling this trailer up with smoke, so they can start to get the feel of what it's gonna be like when the house starts to fill up with smoke, how it's gonna activate the smoke detectors, what to do in the event that there isn't a fire inside. So it's set up to simulate what it'd be like for a real house fire. Um, from here also, I can, we have a computer in here, it can send, uh, fire safety video from the computer to the living room. Uh, we have safety cameras that are being placed throughout the trailer as well, and a TV is mounted on the outside, so, uh, we have it at the schools, or if we do, uh, Family Fun Day, a different event, the parents, we can actually put the surveillance video from inside, outside, so the parents can actually see how their kids are reacting to these different emergency situations and things like that. The store that goes up to the stairs, and it gets really short, I mean, I'm short, so I can kinda stand up up there, but, um, it's really good for the kids. But when we get up there to the door, this door right here is actually heated. It heats up to probably around 98 degrees. And what that helps us with is, once we get the kids into the bedroom, we start talking to them. When your house catches on fire, you wanna stay down low. When, we talk to them about keeping the doors shut when they're inside, that way if there is a fire, it helps keep that smoke out, the flames from getting to them, buys them a little bit of extra time. So this door heats up a little bit, so that way when the kids come to the door and they feel it with the back of their hand, it simulates that there might be fire on that other side of the door, and they need to find an alternate route to get out. Yeah, the bedroom, uh, set up just like a normal bedroom, with just a little dresser in there, it's got a bed. Um, we show the kids what to do in the event of a fire, keeping the doors closed, checking the door for heat, always having two ways to get out of the house in the event of a fire, and to never hide from the firefighters when we come in there, especially in an environment like this. We like to put the smoke in there and start darkening it down to where they can barely see inside and have a firefighter come in. And what that does is, that starts to show the kids that it's gonna be a scary situation, people are gonna pop up out of the middle of nowhere to try getting you out of this house, and it's just trying to get them used to seeing us, in the event that something does happen, they're not scared when this does happen. So that's our fire safety trailer, that's gonna be, starting to be used around the school. The first school it's gonna be going to, I have it set up for October 4th at Deke Elementary. So, the plan is to have it out there. Um, like I said, it is 20 years old, and it does need a lot of work, it needs some paint done on the inside, needs quite a bit of things done on the inside, but the big thing has been trying to get it out there and actually starting to get the kids to retain this. As educators, you guys know that kids retain more when they're seeing, hearing, and doing all at the same time. We can stand up there and talk to the kids in the school for, you know, 20 min- 20, 30 minutes, but after the first 10 minutes, we lost their attention, now they're off talking to their friends or fiddling and trying to do something, get out of there. When you put them into a situation like this, and they're hands-on with it, retaining the information, they're more engaged with everything, and it keeps their mind creative and attention to that.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Robbie?
Does this stay in our district, or is it shared?
This, it stays in our district, and it is also shared with the other districts around us as well. So, um, when we started looking at this, there's a few other departments that have these, but it's just so hard to get them from the other departments, and that was our focus when we were looking at this, is, we didn't wanna just keep it here, we wanted to be able to share it with the other communities and other schools, so they have the opportunity to learn the same thing that our kids are learning. It's all about the safety of the kids, so.
But there are some, another, um, township.
Yep, Flyo has one, and Davison has one.
I think it's excellent, that, you know, these, uh, young students, uh, I know we learned, you know, as a non-emergency responder, uh, things change. When you're under stress, you've got that smoke or the fog or whatever, you've got, you know, blinding you and people screaming and, and the flames are licking at you, uh, you react differently. I mean, it's, you know, you, that, uh, uh, sometimes people freeze up, so I think this is great, to go through the training for these young people.
Absolutely.
And could save lives, many lives down the road, I'm sure it will.
I'd love to, uh, wouldn't, would follow up with you, you know, at some point, uh, just to see, you know, about the availability to do this at some of our other elementary schools, and maybe create a partnership where, you know, that could, that could happen, and so we could create.
Yeah, this is gonna be, um, made part of the fire education. Like I said, I go to, uh, Deke Elementary, Cyrene Elementary, Elmtrow Elementary, and I go over to Mary Creepole as well with this. Um, this is also gonna be shared with Gaines, so Gaines Fire Department will be taken into Gaines Elementary as well. Monday, Township Fire Department will have the chance to take it over to Morse Road Elementary, just to different schools within our district.
That's fantastic.
How do you maintain the, the home?
The.
I know it must cost you some money to, not just update it, but to maintain it.
Absolutely, that it does. Um, through, our members are part of the, we formed the Schwartz Creek Area Firefighters Incorporated, which is a 501(c)(3), and what we do is, we get out in the community and, uh, we help raise funds to kinda help support fire prevention, to, uh, raise different things, so we can help out, be more in the community. We do, we put on the movies in the park in the city of Schwartz Creek, uh, we help out with the music fest that we do around here every year. So, you know, the scholarships for the schools, we do a lot of fundraising and stuff like that for the community and stuff like that, and that's what we're gonna be trying to do with this, is trying to do fundraising, and that's what we've been trying to do to help get this refurbished up to where it needs to be, and that's so it's really presentable to the communities. So, we try to do that, although the funds are minimal that we get to work with here and there, but it's all done through fundraising, through our Firefighters Association, and we put the work into this.
I, I'd just like to add, that being on the fire board, Robbie came to, to the board with this, and, and, you know, we, we all kinda like, yeah, go. And, um, then he came back to me and he started telling me, um, I think, I think I'll let you add it, but what everyone has done, I mean, who donated what, you know that better than I do. I know, um, Home Depot did.
Yep, Home Depot, those, Gil Rice donated a little bit to us, uh, Schwartz Creek Hometown Days, the American Legion, who's been a very big part of this, with the beef raffle we did with them, uh, Sage Link.
I mean, one of the, one of the big things, one of the big things he didn't add was, you don't hook up the utility pole, they had to get a five, six, seven thousand watt generator just to operate it, and, you know, he, I don't, did you get that donated, or?
Yeah, we just got that donated through the American Legion, just donated a 5,000 watt generator.
So, and then, and then something else, there's other firefighters that helped Robbie, but Robbie busts his hind end in this community. And, and what was it, last year or two years ago, when, uh, you did the ride with the firefighter and bought pizza? Tell, just tell them that, and then I'll, 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 we like to keep presentations short, but I think they need to understand how much effort you put into this.
Well, I don't want to blow it up, but what we did is, we, we did a raffle, we got, we met up with Cyrene Elementary, they wanted to do a raffle to do fundraising for a field trip that they had going on. Um, after we did the fundraising, one of the kids, it was actually the day after that we took the kids out, did the fire truck ride with them, brought them to the fire station, had pizza with them, took them back to the school. Um, the teacher ended up telling one of the students that he won the ride, and it was supposed to be that day, but ended up it wasn't. She felt bad, she called to the fire station, she was actually in tears on the phone with our secretary. Secretary called me, I was like, there's a, hey, is there anything that you can do? I said, absolutely, so went up to the fire station, got the fire truck, went, bought a piece of pizza, went up to the school with the kid and just brought him out and just gave him a tour, the fire truck, had lunch with him inside the fire truck, and drove around the block.
Sweet.
That's pretty cool.
Well, thank you for what you do in the community, we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
We look forward to having you in our schools. Thank you.
When is our, uh, Fire Prevention Day in town? Isn't that coming up?
Um, actually, we're looking at October 8th is going to be, the Saturday, October 8th is gonna be the open house here at the fire station. Um, that day is when we plan on hoping having everything done that we need to have done in the fire safety trailer. So we plan on doing a public dedication on October 8th, having community members, everybody come up and speak on that day, and, uh, having just everybody in general come up, just take a look at it, we can take a tour of the fire safety trailer, show them exactly everything that it can do, that, following that will be our open house in the fire station.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. So we are in the throes this week of our audit. Um, so our audit started on Monday, and the auditors will be here likely through, uh, the weekend to Friday. Um, and so with that segue, um, we have had, uh, the pleasure of working with our new Executive Director of Business and Finance, Stacy Piscuzzo, and she's been, uh, hard at work. I know she's worked, uh, with Mike on several things and several others, so, um, I'd like to just give her an opportunity to share a little bit about the work she's been doing and kind of, uh, general state of where we're at, so.
Okay, well, um, as Ben stated, um, the audit's going on this week, it's been going smoothly, they're on track to be out, um, of the district by Friday, they said that everything is going on, on track, so with the audit. Um, so that's good. I have been working with Bruce Fuller and, um, Dave Simonson on the consolidated application and getting our Title 1A and Title 2A budgets in line with what we're actually doing, um, and getting that submitted. Um, I've also been working on the amended budget, getting a staffing detail tab of all of our teachers, where they're at on the salary steps, the, all their salaries in an Excel spreadsheet, and getting all that stuff ready for a detailed budget that we can really drill into and find out what, where we're spending our dollars. Um, I have, um, reviewed eight months of bank reconciliations for all the banks. They had not been, um, reviewed since last November, so, um, I have gone through all of those and reviewed those. Um, updated all my security forms and banking information, um, for the district. Um, also helped, uh, with payroll and getting everybody for the first payroll and teachers, where all the moves were made and the paras, getting all that set so that the first payroll was ready to go and accurate for us in our books. I've been out to some of the buildings, reviewing packing slip procedures, how things are going, um, getting a feel of what's going on currently, so we can make adjustments with our packing slips and start getting them in the central office to be attached to our invoices before we pay them. Um, I've also attended PD, um, the new teachers workshop, I've been out meeting, um, the staff, um, it's been great. Um, I'm also completing reports, your Special Education 4096 and your Transportation 4094. And also completed, uh, a new $35,000 REOLA grant with Pat.
Rothfing?
Yeah, yes, we, um, submitted that today and got all that submitted and the budget into Max Plus for that grant. So, been very busy, a lot of work to do still, but, um, it's been great.
And without putting a number on it, um, our audit is looking like our fund, that our, that our budget is looking better than we had initially anticipated?
Yes, um, by a lot. That is probably gonna, um, go in the audit, because our budget was very, very, the variance between our budget and what we're actually gonna end at is very, very different. So, um, that, the auditors did tell me that that will go in the audit, um, as a recommendation that we need to budget better. Um, we budgeted about a $200,000 loss, and it's looking like we're gonna add $500,000 to the fund balance. So, it's a swing to the good, but your budget's not supposed to be that far off, so. Um, and I have been diligently working on getting a new budget to you guys, um, that should be coming pretty soon, so that you guys can amend, um, a new budget for this year and have a, it's gonna be more accurate and in line with what's actually happening in the district.
So we're gonna look to bring you an amendment to our current year's budget, uh, in October, so that you'll have a little bit earlier than normal, uh, just because Stacy will have had a chance to really build that from, from ground up, so we'll be able to look through those numbers at that time, but, um, definitely appreciate all the work you're doing and, um, you know, you know you've been working hard, so.
Stacy, when do we anticipate getting the audit report?
Um, the auditor today said that it looks good to, for them to wrap up by the end of this week, so Friday's gonna be their last day of it here, and he said he'd have a draft to me very shortly after that, so I'm assuming maybe the draft would come next week. Um, Ben and I will have a time to review that draft, um, we'll do, uh, management discussion and analysis where we respond to anything like the budget variances and what we're doing to correct that. Um, and then they will be here in October to present the, to present the audit to you guys.
Okay, good. Any questions for Stacy?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it. Okay, we have two boards of community reports, so we have building insights and academic achievement. Who wants to go first? Ryan?
Sorry, Stacy. It's a three-part report. The first part, uh, Stacy was, uh, there and available, and she developed a report for us, uh, it was building in site, revenue expense accounts, um, and there's, uh, it's, it's actually two-part from, uh, uh, June 30th of 2017, and then the other one, uh, by level adds up, September 30th of 2017, in production. And so we went through that, I, I didn't get this, I don't think it's, uh, in our notes, but I'm gonna ask Joan if she put in our notes. Uh, the glaring thing, uh, that was, uh, the transfers out was the big, uh, the big concern. We're gonna ask, uh, in fact, uh, Stacy or somebody recommended that, uh, that we detail that, break that down in our next meeting, so we know exactly what that, that, uh, 1,001,04592, uh, what that means, what that transfer out means, uh, that would be helpful to us. But I'll make sure that's also in our notes, and, um, so that was the first part. If you have any questions on that, Stacy can probably answer that while we're here. Any, like, you don't have a copy? Okay. Uh, the second part is the, uh, is, uh, the agenda, that was there, um, and that's in the board packet. I've got, um, numbers on here also, we don't know what it is, but it's gonna bring a lot of people, a lot of commerce, uh, economics, uh, maybe even students. And it's not just because of, uh, I, I truly believe we need to clean up Schwartz Creek and make it, uh, more public-friendly anyway when we come into town. Um, yesterday I was going through Grand Blank, and I noticed, uh, a great big arch going across Saginaw Streets is welcoming the Grand Blank Bobcats, you know, and I'm thinking, wow, I mean, you could see, uh, they were putting a lot of effort and money, time and energy into, uh, welcoming people into their town, and it looks like that's what we're starting to look at here, is to make it more people-friendly, and I don't know if you wanna explain a little bit more of your discussion with Adams at all?
Sure. Um, some of the simple things, you'll see some of our signage that's going up, just so that it's more user-friendly for people to be able to see where different buildings are. Um, you'll see that the stop, the stop signs around the district as well as our.
And it looks like that's what we're starting to look at here, is to make it more people-friendly. I don't know if you wanna explain a little bit more of your discussion with Adams at home?
Sure. Some of the simple things, you'll see some of our signage that's going up just so that it's more user-friendly for people to be able to see where different buildings are. You'll see that the stop, the stop signs around the district as well as our city areas, they're just a little bit nicer than a typical, you know, galvanized pole, it's, you know, just a way to spruce up the street signs and make them look more user-friendly. So, we've been talking about ways around the district that we can do some low-cost, high-impact work with some trees as well as small parks and walking paths just to make the area around the district as well as the city a very appealing place and family-friendly. So, there's a small patch of grass right out here next to where our bus wash is, it borders the creek. It's actually an unbuildable piece, there's not really anything that you can do with it, but it's a decent-sized piece, almost up to an acre in size. And we mow it currently and there, he said that he's been able to secure a forestry grant that would allow us to plant some trees there and maybe look at a three-phase project where we might be able to put a gazebo there, you know, a little bit of a walking trail, possibly some trees just to make it a, you know, with a little bit of a sign, which would be a good partnership between the school district because obviously that's our property, but also if they're going to be supplying the funds to, you know, improve it, that can be a really nice thing for this area. We also talked about some of the trees and some of our fencing around our stadium here, just some beautification things that we can do to, you know, for, for all of our residents, but, you know, especially as we have perspective, potentially new people coming in.
Thanks, thank you very much. So, walking down through this agenda, the park project discussion, we discussed that and basically what was Ben just explained here. Some of the number three, cost-effective district why beautification, fencing was a big one and I, I agree, high-profile areas, it was mentioned, black chain link fencing upgrades, just to beautify things, simple things, paint, fencing, the trees, the planting, mild landscaping to, to upgrade and beautify our, our area. Dragon statue, we talked about that, I think Lorraine brought that up a long time ago and this is one rendition of, it looks like the dragon's got a little indigestion there. You like that dragon?
Absolutely.
It's definitely not a Barney dragon.
It's definitely intimidating.
That's right.
But we're talking about, there was a lot of thoughts going to this, we thought about like the, the big blockhouse in the rock they call it, there at the, in Flint where people are constantly painting on it. We thought about having something where the kids could kind of demonstrate their artful talent here in the Swartz Creek area, but I, I don't know that this dragon.
I think that's too nice.
It's, yeah, that would be way too nice.
Buy a rock.
Yeah. Get a rock or a cinder block or maybe the gray building over here. That's doing.
I was gonna say, the one that bothers me so much. Sparty gets painted every, every other year.
Well, and GMI, when you think of the Kettering Bulldog, it was always getting painted.
That bulldog's got a couple coats.
That's right. So, anyway, it, it's just the whole idea of bringing things, lifting things up, making it look nice, stop signs, the black fluid stop signs. Nobody, I think I'm the only one that's bothered by that, it's PAC, there's a cinder block, just a plain old gray cinder block portion of that and it bothers me because it doesn't really to me blend in very well, but I was overwhelmed by, nobody really noticed it.
I know, I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about.
So, if you, if you do, and I, maybe I shouldn't even bring it up because nobody bothers seeing anything about it, it doesn't really to me blend in, but we're not, we're gonna put that on hold, it's just my problem. I'll have to live with it, maybe therapy.
We can take it.
Maybe therapies.
Summer work projects, that'd be the next part in our paperwork here. Mr. Chapman put together building insight projects, the start date, completion date, cost, and as you can see, some of these are not yet completed. Some have been, but it's all pretty self-explanatory. One of the bigger things, and I'm not sure where we're at with it because last I knew, the building numbers, the building number identification on the building, I thought we were gonna be done by this past week and I'm not sure if that could be completed. I have to double check on it. Okay. So, unless you have any other questions, that's my complete report and.
I think, I think Lorraine will want to talk about the, about the dragon.
The dragon?
Benny Drive.
Oh, well, I have already, I love that dragon and I've already talked to several people, I have already got some people committed to donating upon this cost of the dragon, but I think we could fire up that dragon with the, and drive it to school.
Yeah, I think that's a real good idea. I think that we could get a little fundraiser going, some of the PCOs would probably be very interested in that. I don't know if you've had a chance to see our new mascot, our new dragon, but he is pretty impressive. So, Mr. Heatherton effectively named him Fireball and we are, I was the one who typed it, yeah, wasn't necessarily my idea.
Okay.
So, it's a, so it's pretty neat to see that and that was a partnership, so we might be able to do something similar for the statue. So, I, I think we should, you know, maybe at our next meeting, you know, Lorraine, if you can come, maybe we could start, get some movement so that we're ready to talk about it.
And placement, where we're gonna put it.
Yeah, where?
I think right up.
By the entrance.
By the entrance, which would give it a little protection in the entry, you know, to the high school where we have the circle drop off type, that's just what I was.
Yeah, it's a common area.
That's a great area.
Do you have an idea what's the cost of this?
They're going to, they're taking that and they think they can do something real similar, but they're gonna get back with me on the price, so. But we also, I also told them that, they also told me that obviously logically the size dictates a large portion of that and I said, we definitely don't want like a two-foot dragon, we want it to be.
Is this six foot?
That's about six foot, yeah.
I'd say, I'd say, I'd say ten foot, man.
Overwhelming and overbearing and so on, we'll see what they come back with. Is that from crops?
Yeah.
Any other questions for me?
No, but I do have a comment on your wall that bothers you. Do we have the logo up on Jim's front entrance there?
Not, yeah, not yet, but that's coming.
Okay, just the thought was maybe we could get one downsized and put it there and it would just have a flow between that end of the building and this one and would break off that color, would that help you?
It would make you feel better.
That was just, that's just an idea.
I think it'd look nice. Okay. Yeah, we can do the SC, I can cancel the rest of my therapy.
Cancel the rest of it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
We got the big decisions out of the way tonight, now let's go move forward.
So, Miss Stacy, you have academic achievement?
I do and I have to apologize because my notes are in my computer and we can't get on site. So, I'm just gonna say what I wrote here and then Roger, you're gonna take it over if that's okay. Sorry about that. At academic achievement, we review the district PD and summer learning and that's all my notes that I can remember because it's all in here, so.
So, we basically.
Five D, five D, good job, Tony.
How everything tied in together. So, there were six days of five D training, in between those six days, there were three in June and three in August is when Ben and I had a chance to go out to Seattle for the Center for Educational Leadership Training, which are essentially the authors at the University of Washington of five D. So, as we were training the staff, we were also showing up on training from the actual authors of the instructional framework itself. And so, we came back and tackled day four, five and six. Of course, we had the support staff, which was our first round at doing a all-day, complete invite to all support staff. Said there were about a hundred and twenty-five people for our first go and we were pretty excited about that and had some very good reviews. And shortly after that was our new teacher training, where we bring the new teachers in and kind of get them accustomed to the district, everything from some of the big things that we're working on to some simple things like how to access their email and their computer and make sure they have all their things filled out with telling so that they can be employed and, you know, get paid and things like that. That's kind of what they care about on their very first experience, which then led into two full days, a district day where Ben went through our five D training for the other teachers who weren't at five D full training. So, as you know, we had sixty staff do all six days of certified training, they're certified in five D. And so, we took the other hundred and fifty or so teachers through a day overview of what basically everyone else took six days, but it was very well received, it's a team building. If you guys recall the cards and looking at the colors and how that matched your leadership with that with all two hundred teachers at one time, that was very well received and then jumped right into that training. We also had the buildings doing some very similar things as our focus and as it all wrapped up for the year through the instructional framework is gonna be culture, environment, engagement. And so, they all kind of flowed together and tied in all the way up to our kickoff for the year. And what's neat to see is, I was in several buildings today and in every building I was in and just to give a shout out to Cyrene Elementary, teachers working through the routines that they've already been learning and kids coming out of their classrooms knowing what to do, even kindergarten students in that, in that school. And to see the, the implementation, we're just in week two, of kids really participating and learning from these routines that they've been learning, it just kind of shows you when you really focus on something that it can get done very highly, in a very highly effective way. And so, it's been neat to see just the alignment and focus on these things and I think that's helped the teachers and it's neat to see it in action. So, when we start doing our board tours, which I'd like to get started again in October, I think we'll be able to point some of those things out and be able to start to see that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, any other questions? Moving on, we have informational items under number seven, we didn't have any questions from our previous meeting and just for your information, there's the employment of non-certified staff. Karen Hins, Peter, Nicole Haskins and Shayla Marinsky. Any questions on those? Okay, board discussion items, we have a policy related to board meeting video retention. A few meetings ago, we had talked about how long you should keep the videos or store them or retain them.
Yeah, so just to get the ball rolling, this is a first read, this is something that I put together, Travis has helped me, just to try and think about, you know, a very, very basic wording for putting a policy together that would fit. Obviously, we're recording these and live streaming them, but we're also keeping them archived. And so, what's interesting is that technically they are around forever, assuming that YouTube, I guess, doesn't go down, which I suppose that that's possible. So, what we had talked about is we could create actual files so that we would be able to have the file itself in addition to the online URL, if you will. So, this policy would apply to the meeting that we keep here. The last board meeting, the suggestion was twenty years, so that's what we put in here. We don't see that being a problem as far as storage space or anything like that, but it's in your board packet and then if you had any discussion or any input or, or things you'd like to be changed, we can get that prepared. And then at the next board meeting, we could simply do a second read and then approve it as long as it was acceptable.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
This is fine for me, but did you check to see what we have to have on our printed minutes? I mean, we, we talked about downsizing them because we now have them archived, so.
That's a great, that's a great point. Actually, our policy speaks to what we need to have in our minutes and our minutes over, you know, the past couple of years, you know, have grown extensively and I think now that we're recording and once this policy is approved, our minutes can go back to basic Robert's rules of order and following what's in our board policy. So, our board minutes would probably be able to be captured on a couple pages, you know, simply, we need to make sure we're recording the votes, especially on roll call votes, but any vote. We're also gonna be recording, you know, the topics and obviously we'll always have agendas, but significant dialogue that will not need to be captured because we'll have it on the video and then we'll know that we have a policy for storing that video as well.
Okay, and the one, this says committee meetings aren't recorded, which we know that, but the minutes for those will be included in our paper minutes?
Correct, yep. Exactly.
Any other questions? So, if not, we'll be bringing this back again?
Yes, I'll bring this back at our next meeting and if you have any edits in the meantime, let me know and, and we'll do a second read at our next board meeting. We talked a few board meetings ago, we did a closed session for the purpose of my evaluation and we just, I went through at that time my self-assessment and we looked at that and had some conversations about the training for all of us. I've been working with Adam Hartley out at Fenton and his board is very excited about this, an opportunity for us to work together with them. So, this will be a way we can save some cost. The tricky part, of course, is getting everybody together at the same time. So, we're gonna be dealing with sixteen people's schedules. We have, the training is provided by Collins and Blaha, but there's gonna be sixteen of us trying to get training together and so the date we're looking at right now is September 26th. So, I was hoping you could give me some insight to see if that date would work for you, it's a Tuesday evening, I believe. We would probably do a 6:30 to 8:30 or nine o'clock, they say two to three hours for the training.
6:30 would be the start.
Would be the start, yeah. And then we would work out the details of whether or not we would host it or Fenton would host it, but one way or another, we'll be able to share costs with them and that's always a good thing, too. Plus, I think it might be kind of interesting to have the perspective of another school board, you know, to be able to kind of, you know, work through some of those things. We obviously have our own things that we deal with that are different than they, they do, but, you know, just kind of need to maybe collaborate with them a little bit. So, does anybody have any absolute conflicts on September 26th?
I don't.
All right, I will inform them and we'll try and get something scheduled. Adam had said that his board had thought that that would be a good date as well, so. So, that is what I have at this time.
All right. Under board action items, we need to identify up to three delegates for the Michigan Association of School Board Delegate Assembly, which is on Thursday, the ninth of November, at the Lansing Center in Lansing. Obviously, it would be people who are planning to attend the conference.
I haven't signed up for that.
Do I have volunteers?
Yeah, I signed up for that delegate assembly, I do.
Any other volunteers?
Sure, I'm gonna be there.
Ken? We don't have to have three, but it's up to three. Anyone else?
I'm gonna probably be driving back and forth.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be there.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to nominate Stacy and Ken.
So, we'll support.
Any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education appoint Stacy and Ken as their delegates at the MASP Delegate Assembly on Thursday, November 9th, 2017, starting at 7:30 PM at the Lansing Center in Lansing, Michigan.
I'm sorry, it just made me think of something that Joan had asked, we have a board meeting that night before, so she, it doesn't matter to me because I would just leave from the board meeting to go to Lansing because I'm gonna be there in the morning for classes. So, she had said in the past, they have rescheduled the board meetings, so it's not so much, it doesn't really matter to me, I don't know how Ken feels about that. Are you, I'm going all the days this year. So, would you rather schedule so that we can just get our stuff together and go or just leave it after the board meeting?
I don't care, just if we can make it short.
Yeah, because it'll be late.
We hear nine, you're gonna be over there at 9:30 or 10.
And we still gotta, you know, get in the hotel.
Or maybe if we could look at doing it on a, I don't know, a lot of questions in the Tuesdays. We need to do it on Tuesday.
So, September, if you look at what we have to get done and approve in September, it's one of the lightest months of the year.
Maybe November.
It's November?
Sorry, it's November.
It's like November 9th or 8th.
So, that's why I wanted to ask ahead, it's November 9th.
Yeah, what, we can look at that and then maybe at our next board meeting, talk about, you know, what we have to get done on that, because I have the board meetings fairly mapped out so we can see.
Was it November the month you wanted to do one?
What?
Yes, but we need to look and see, you know, what actually works.
If we can, we'll try to bump it to Tuesday.
And that way it's not so much.
I'll look at that, yeah.
That'd make a lot, that'd make a lot more sense, we can bump it to Tuesday.
I don't mind, but it's pretty late to drive to Lansing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Nice catch.
Given, given the motion.
It's Joan.
No comments or questions, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. B, we have the opportunity to identify Genesee County Association of School Board members, liaison and alternate volunteers. And Brian, have you?
I, yes, I was, but I, I lost interest. We were actually in conflict, our board meetings were-
It's board meeting.
Yeah, and shortly after that, they started, I started getting a lot of the, I was kind of cut off the mail list after that, so I-
Will you, because it's new to me, kind of explain to me what this entails, like what do you-
Brian's been representing us for several years.
Yeah, they, basically, they tried to kind of, MASP format, they try to train, teach, and try to develop school board members to that degree through the county, through an association with the county. And there's a lot of great training that goes on.
So you just go and they have the different trainings and stuff?
Once a month, yes. Well, a lot of the trains are open to all the school board members. We get the, they send it out to all of us.
Yeah, we get the emails.
Right, but you're saying that sometimes meetings would conflict with our meeting nights?
Right. The regular board meetings were actually conflicting with our board meetings and then-
So if you put your name down, you have to go on this, is what I meant?
Well, there's an alternate, too. There's primary and there's an alternate.
But the problem of it is, if our meeting's in the same night, it doesn't matter if it's an alternate.
They're not now, though.
Or they're not?
No, because we're on Wednesdays, they're on Thursdays.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's been changed.
So with that, do I have volunteers for liaison and/or alternate?
Let's see. You and Mike.
Come on, Tony, you're new.
Trying to think.
Come on, Ken, it's your last two.
I'll think.
Bring it on.
I'd probably, I'd probably offend somebody.
Oh.
No.
All right, I'll do it.
Do I have a second volunteer?
So moved.
Stop! If I don't have any other volunteers, then I would entertain a motion for Stacy to be our liaison.
What if I can't make it?
So moved.
Brian and Tony.
So they'll send me emails and I have to do stuff?
I'll help you.
Thank you.
It's actually very educational. It's a good thing to go to.
I'm sure it is, but thank you.
Look how smart he is.
I feel like I've done, I've done before.
Any comments or questions?
I did it before.
It must've just been enlightening, enlightening because you remember.
I did, but I went and voted before. But I get confused between the delegate and the other.
It was for the delegate.
And these are most of them.
Was it, because I get confused. When I go vote for GSD, is that the delegate or is that the-
It is, it's like you said.
That's the budget that you want to-
You guys can vote.
All right, so any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Too late. Thank you, Stacy. And thank you Stacy and Ken for representing us at the delegate assembly. All right. Now we have an opportunity for those of you in the audience, if you would like to address the board, please stand and state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone?
Jim Thompson, 8196 Miller Road. Now, beautification is noticeable in the community. Thank you all for what you're doing. And let's make it shine for our homecoming, which is a week from Marla. I mean, Friday. Also, on beautification, there is a resource available to the general public at the Mott Community College. It's called Fab Lab, where you can use their CNC machines for metalwork. So look into that resource. Mott Community College Fabrication, Fab Lab.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else? Okay. Comments and questions from the board? Anybody? Thank you, Lieutenant Fitzgerald. Is it Miss Gerald? Ms. Patrick, sorry. We appreciate everything you do in the community. Thank you for being here. Look forward to working with you. And thanks to our administrators who have worked really, really hard to prepare for this school year. I think you guys are doing some very innovative things and I know it's showing and people are appreciating it in the community, so thank you. Thank you Stacy for your work on the audit. Thank you, Colleen, just because. Anybody else? No? All right. We now have the need to go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations exempt material. I moved at the board meeting closed session under HC and AH of the Open Meetings Act to discuss negotiations and collective bargaining and material exempt from public discussion by state statute. I need a motion.
Support.
Stacy, Brian, and I also need a roll call. Please, Joan.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. We will go into closed session in five minutes, eight o'clock. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Appreciate it.